Good morning, welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, September 2nd, we're in September 2015, we're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square and we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no presentations this morning and no one signed up under public comment.
Ken wants to speak.
All right, well you came in just in the nick of time. I think I know what you're gonna speak about.
Hey.
Yeah. Let's just move it off, Kinsen. Yeah, let's pull it off, Kinsen.
For the record, my name is Kenneth Petzel and I live at 745 Harris Street here in Salem and I'm on the board of Rock Recovery Outreach Unity Center. We have a drop-in center for homeless and people suffering from drug addiction and alcohol and middle elders. I want to invite you to a party, a celebration of recovery. Hands Across the Bridge will be Saturday, September 12th, from noon to 6:00 PM. I want you to come and support us in supporting individuals and family in recovery and I wanted to share my recovery, that I'm from Memphis, Tennessee and I thought this morning it was cold and I might have to put on my pants and my socks, but in Memphis until Labor Day we wear seersucker and bucked shoes. I don't know if y'all know what that are, but in Memphis I was homeless for a period of time. I'm a Vietnam veteran, I have PTSD and depression and I was in the mental hospital twice in Memphis and as a board member, we try to give back and lead by example for people and we're putting on this event and last year was my first year as a board member and I went to a store and to get flowers. We go up on the bridge and we throw flowers off in remembrance of things that we had lost and weren't able to get back and the manager said, "Come back tomorrow." And he said, "My secretary," when I come back, he said, "my secretary's husband was a founding member of Rock and he died from suicide." And then yesterday, I went to another business and I talked to the receptionist and she got a little excited and tried to help me because, you know, I look a little homeless and a little out of place when I start asking for stuff and she said, "Has it been a year? I was at Bridgeway last year and I came to recovery and I had so much fun and I want to help you." And I'm just showing you my illness, I'm pulling the scab off of it to make it heal. It heals by reliving it and getting over it and I want you to understand people with mental illness and drug addiction that they have a problem and they start self-medicating and they get caught in use of alcohol and drugs and it doesn't do as good as it used to and they get caught in the law and get put in jail because that's the only thing the law knows to do is put in jail. I get so upset, I go to city council meetings and the police say, "Well, we raided Wallace Marine Park and we got three dump loads of garbage that the homeless collected." Well, the homeless didn't make anything, they just relocated it, they reused it and if you'd give the homeless a place to live, you know, we need a place to live and food and quiet to get better, to heal. If you chase them away from there, they went to Marion Square Park and they started fighting and stabbing people and now the city police are taking names and evidence and they're gonna start excluding people from downtown. That's how they think that they need to handle the situation and it's totally wrong. You know, they need to get them a safe place to live, a campground or a little mini village. You know, how do we change the system? I know you care, y'all have come to the reentry initiative meetings and I know you want to help people and I want to have a party. I've seen good things come from Rock and from Celebrate Recovery. People get better, they help each other, it's a family of people struggling to be normal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
So no one else signed up for public comment and I think before we do our consent calendar, we're gonna remove one of the items.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, under Community Services, to remove the order that would approve Nate Brown to the Economic Development Advisory Board and move it under to the action.
I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion and a second to move the item under Community Services from consent to action, since we have Nate Brown here and we can absolutely not pass this without hearing from him, so those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 All right, that's approved, so now we'll move to our consent calendar.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the consent calendar this morning and on it, under Board of Commissioners, we have two OLCC applications with recommended approval for Bellman Cider Company LLC in Jervis and Nagoya Japanese Steakhouse and Sushi in Salem. Public Works received hearings officer's decision approving partition case P-15006 Newkirk, Clerk's File 5700. Receive a hearings officer's decision dismissing administrative review case AR-15020 Wilson, Clerk's File 5699. And the last, under the Sheriff's Office, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Corrections to receive $949,650 via Measure 57 to support the Community Corrections Program through June 30th, 2017.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these items, all in favor say aye.
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 They're approved. So Rod, are you waiting for anyone or, why don't we have Nate come first, is that all right?
I suspect somebody.
Right, yeah, so why, okay, so let's move, since Community Services is C and that comes before H anyway, let's go ahead and, Kevin, why don't you introduce this item since you're the liaison with the economic development.
Come on up to the side.
Yeah, and Nate come on up to the hot seat here.
The Economic Development Advisory Board, for those people who are watching, is a 19-member board that advises us as commissioners on economic policy, or policies that would affect economic development in Marion County, also recommending grants, et cetera, and we had a vacancy as a result of the City of Salem change and we went to the City of Kaiser and asked for a representative that is involved with the city as well as understands our community and economic development. As we know, Kaiser has done tremendous things over the last many years and so it's an honor to have Nate with us today and the board has recommended him for our appointing to the advisory team to round us out. I think we still have one more position that we're gonna try to fill, but this will give us a well-rounded board. Nate, welcome.
Thank you, and I believe Lori Christopher was on it, if not from the beginning, from very close to the beginning, and then she is no longer the mayor and so she's resigned and we had also a desire to have Kaiser represented. I know Kathy Clark, the new mayor, was very adamant that we get someone from Kaiser under Economic Development Advisory Board, so this is great. So Nate, tell us a bit about yourself, we know you, but let the public know who you are.
Well, it's an honor to be considered for this position. I have been with the City of Kaiser for 12 years now, we've seen a lot of change in that 12 years. I just am excited to be able to work together as a team to address the important issues of economic development. We all benefit from economic development in our region and this board has the opportunity to make a difference. I know that there are opportunities for us to develop a stronger economic climate in our region and I'm just happy to participate. So I'm anxious to represent Kaiser's perspective because Kaiser has a unique way of approaching the world, I think, and it's successful. We're excited to address our own economic development issues within the City of Kaiser through our own advisory board, but participating on this board will bring a regional perspective and I'm just happy to play that role. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Oh, just a comment, I don't know if he's a blushing type, but Nate is really one of the most pleasant, knowledgeable and effective local officials that we deal with and I'm real happy to have him on this board.
I have been known to blush, so.
Well, Nate also is sort of the voice of reason when everybody's kind of in a panic and says, "Well, the law works this way or we really need to wait and do that." So tell me, you wrote on your application that City of Kaiser is developing its own economic development program and you're interested in the opportunity to coordinate and strengthen both programs. So what are some burning economic development issues that you're facing in Kaiser that you think can be coordinated with the county?
Well, Kaiser, of course, has some unique issues. We have the dichotomy between Kaiser Station, which Area C now is under construction, which I invite you to, it's kind of exciting, I drive by there every morning and excited to see the development, but we also have River Road, which has, because of the history and because of the geography, is more of our kind of strip commercial kind of development and there are small lots and there are challenges with serving those businesses and so it's kind of an approach to stay in touch with our small businesses along River Road, at the same time recognizing the advantages that Kaiser Station brings. But Kaiser specifically is a bedroom community and we only have, only one in seven jobs is local to Kaiser, for Kaiser residents. Six of those seven people have to drive outside of Kaiser for employment and so creating more economic vitality and a better job foundation for the City of Kaiser is a big issue and so we are examining the issues of that economic development program. We have established a vision for the City of Kaiser, it's called the Kaiser Compass, and that has targeted five specific industry sectors. We know that we can't have the large lot industrial development that Salem has, for example, out at the Mill Creek improvements. So all of these things play into a complex picture that is difficult to navigate sometimes to actually make a difference, but as we try to address those through the medical community and through educational opportunities, some of those targeted industries, I think we have the opportunity to make a difference.
Thank you. I thought you were gonna talk about the big toy in tourism too, but didn't hear that. So just so you know, Marlene Parsons is gonna ask you to come to a meeting on October 6th at 6 o'clock about the big toy and writing the grant.
Ah, okay.
So, now you know.
Where's that?
It's a regional park out in north part of Kaiser.
Which Marion County has been a dynamic partner from the beginning and it is, it truly is a regional facility that makes a difference in our region.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we appoint Nate Brown to the Economic Development Advisory Board for the term ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the order that appoints Nate Brown to Economic Development Advisory Board, lovingly known as EDAB, for a term ending June 30th, 2018. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, Nate.
You are unanimously approved, so thank you for coming down. So let's move to Public Works and then we'll skip back up to Health as soon as they're ready. So this is Consider Approval of the FEMA Community Rating System Annual Recertification and we got Brandon Reich.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brandon Reich, representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Today I'm bringing to you the annual recertification for the county's participation in the community rating system of FEMA. Some acronyms up there I'll be using for the first part here, the presentation. Marion County participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. Nearly all jurisdictions in Oregon do. In order to qualify for flood insurance for properties in their jurisdiction, a community has to participate in the NFIP. The community rating system is a portion of the NFIP, it's a voluntary system that jurisdictions can do, voluntary program, and it reduces the cost of flood insurance for residents in the county based on activities that the county undertakes. Across the nation and across Oregon, around 10% of communities participate in the community rating system. Marion County is a Class 6 community. Being a Class 6 community brings many benefits to the county residents in how we manage the floodplains in our county, but primarily, the big thing, I guess, is that residents in floodplains save 20% off their flood insurance premiums in Marion County and outside the floodplains, if you have flood insurance outside a mapped floodplain, you still save 10% off the premium. In Marion County, there are over $70 million worth of insured structures and contents and the savings for county residents on the CRS system are over $50,000 every year. So I wanted to highlight kind of a bigger picture of how the savings shake out in Marion County. Across the state, there's a minimum elevation to be above the flood elevation, base flood elevation of one foot. So in most jurisdictions across Oregon, if you build an average size newer home, you might pay around $600 for your flood insurance for a year. Marion County, for a long time now, has required that that floor, first floor of the home, be elevated to two foot instead of one foot. The additional foot, it helps out when there's a flood because there's some wiggle room in what information the FEMA provides and there's some uncertainty in the actual flood level and this helps keep people further above the flood elevation and better ensure that their house won't get flooded inside the house. But that extra two foot, extra one foot to the two-foot elevation saves people off the top a third of the cost of flood insurance, just by being elevated the additional amount. But on top of that, the CRS discount saves the 20%. So overall, the savings in Marion County are nearly 50%, nearly half of what they would cost in another jurisdiction, just based on the elevation of the homes in Marion County and the CRS discount. To achieve the CRS savings, the National Flood Program looks at a lot of activities that the county participates in, a lot of things that we do and that we would do anyway for other reasons, to achieve other goals related to stormwater management, protecting habitat and such. They look at all these activities the county participates in and they assign a rating to the county based on how the activities help preserve property during a flood and help protect the people during a flood event. Last year, we had our cycle visit, which is like an audit essentially, and we maintained our class rating of six. We're in the middle of the sixth category, we're 250 points from Class, we're 250 points away from Class 5, which is the next category. There are some things that we could possibly do to achieve the next category, a Class 5 community, which would be a 25% savings. When you get into these Class 5 and Class 4 and such communities, there are very few in Oregon and very few across the nation. Sometimes the things you have to do are very expensive, there's staff, very staff, a lot of staff time and a lot of cost, but we, Marion County could look at doing some new mapping and generating some new information about the flooding in Marion County. We could look at new ways to manage in those, in flood areas tied to what new information we have from that mapping, the flood depths and historical floods. We could also work with other jurisdictions to do a master plan for a watershed. These are some ways that potentially we could achieve the Class 5 community rating. Continuously, I still look at the program to look for ways that we can both maintain our rating and possibly improve it somewhat without doing some very large programming. One really important development is a lawsuit at the federal level between FEMA and the National Marines Fisheries Service that will probably cause FEMA to change the way it operates the federal floodplain program in Oregon. This will cause jurisdictions to change how they operate the floodplain program in our communities. The changes could mean new mapping of floodplain areas in Marion County, new development standards could be applied in these floodplain areas, and potentially certain types of development could be excluded from certain areas. We don't have anything final now, this is a discussion that's taking place between two federal agencies and local jurisdictions aren't privy to what is going on. There is information on the website that's listed here and if someone doesn't want to type in the whole URL there, they can look in their search engine, they can type in Oregon, FEMA, and NMS, N-M-F-S, and that'll come up with some information about the current status of the changes to the floodplain program regarding the lawsuit at the federal level. So people have questions or want more information about floodplains in Marion County outside the cities or about building in floodplains, they're welcome to contact me, my information is up there, I'm at 503-566-4175. Every year CRS asks that the county continue to recertify, that we continue to maintain the programs that allow us to achieve the CRS discount. Before you today is a packet where staff has worked with the departments in the county to verify that the information being submitted is still accurate. Staff recommends the board sign the verification package as provided. With that, I'm available for any questions you have.
Questions?
Well, I do, Brandon, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but numbers don't seem to match what I think they should and I'll tell you why. First of all, I'll start with the $70 million valuation, I have to believe there's a whole bunch more that comes under some kind of floodplain, even downtown Salem should account for that much, Kaiser and all around, so that number seems wrong. Then the savings also seem wrong because if we're saving people 20%, these rates that I'm, as a property owner next to streams, they've doubled and got a quadruple and so a 20% or whatever we can save becomes even more important. So could you talk about how you're coming up with a valuation and what you know about rates coming out of FEMA for flood insurance?
Sure. Yeah, the $70 million is for Marion County rural, outside the cities, and that's the insured amount that the federal government ensures. A lot of properties, especially in Marion County, outside the city, a lot of properties don't have flood insurance. If you don't have a mortgage, you're not required to have flood insurance and we have maybe 350, 400 policies in the entire county.
That doesn't seem enough to me.
No, it isn't. Well, it depends, you're required to have it if you have a mortgage and if you don't and you feel like you're at the risk for flooding, it's a good thing to have. And in Marion County, the cost savings from CRS helps to make it more affordable and with new homes, we work really hard to ensure that they're built to the best standards, not only for flooding and for the requirements, but also to meet the insurance standards. Sometimes you can forget, you can meet all the standards today and then eventually it gets submitted for the insurance quote, insurance rating, and that's a little bit down the road and sometimes what can come back from that is less encouraging. So we try to be more comprehensive and look down the road to make sure what's being built is also good for the insurance side for people.
I just think people forget, that's maybe what I'm really getting at, and they don't think it applies to them. As a youngster going cross-country by boat between Kaiser and just below St. Paul, I pretty well seen it all underwater and I don't know how you get that message to people, people in Turner, I know, well, some of those were certainly outside of the city limits. I think they understand what it can mean and I just guess I'm hoping, it's so hard when they're raising rates and making the subsidies that have gone on insurance rates in the past go away, you know, more expensive than ever, but if you need it, you'll wish you had it, is all I can tell you.
Absolutely, and rates are going up, there was a revision to the federal law and the rise in the rates dropped a little bit as part of that revision and some existing grandfathering was retained to some degree, but on the whole, rates are rising in order to bring in as much insurance money as FEMA pays out for things. In Turner, the city is doing a restudy of the floodplain to get more accurate information. There's new topographic data than there was 30 and 40 years ago when these maps were first made using lasers, the LiDAR data, and it's a lot better, it's down to a foot, maybe six inches, two feet, it's in that range depending upon where the information, LiDAR comes from. Turner's doing a remap to use the better topography and look at what the actual flood elevations are. Some people that built in Turner may have some changes to their flood map and they maybe had a different flood level than they realized and that can help provide information to say that, yeah, if the water comes through again like it did before, you will want to have flood insurance. And areas outside the county are also being remapped in that area to some degree.
All right, thank you.
Comments, questions? Okay. All right, well, I've got a couple of questions before we have a motion here. So first of all, Brandon, thank you for bringing forward the information and I really appreciate you putting in the slide about what we can do to improve our rating because you know that's what the question I always ask is, so how, and we have improved, I think when I started here, we were at 15% maybe, 10 or 15? We've gone up in the classes quite a bit, just from the work that your department and division has done, so.
We entered at 15%, then we dropped to 20, then we went to 25. We've been at 25 for a while. It's a pretty, we're at 20, we started 10, 15, 20. It's pretty hard to get below 20, there's a lot of really intense activity you have to do, but we're looking at doing more outreach. We've got, have some money in the budget to do some outreach and look at some, providing some information to people, like in the Turner area, that's an area, parts of Turner are identified as a repetitive loss area, an area that's been affected by floodwaters, more often than other areas of the county. And to 50, 60 households, every year, we send information about flooding, so if you hadn't just moved in or hadn't been there before, you can at least know what some of the resources are, both at the county and at the state level, for different kind of grant and loan programs to help out with elevating a house or repairing it.
So the two questions have, one is, I recalled, and I just pulled it up on my phone, an article about a month ago in the Statesman Journal that talked about Salem submitting its application this fall to FEMA and they are hoping by amending a city ordinance that they can get to 25% on the insurance premiums and it says that it would prohibit enclosed areas below the base flood elevation, it's ordinance 1715, and then it says their current requirements require for the properties to be one foot above the base flood elevation and then it says, their development engineer said there has not been a case of construction anywhere in the city for this, so it's kind of, you know, they're gonna change their ordinance for something that never happens and then they're gonna hope that they get the higher rating. So it just led me to some questions about, and it was in the slide presentation, but you went over it quickly, where are we with regard to that particular ordinance that they're looking at in terms of the number of feet that we require? And then I'm remembering that we just had a conversation not that long ago about whether we went with the highest standard or whether we went with what's required and is that anything close to what they're doing and does that influence the FEMA rating? So if you could just speak to that, do you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
The thing that we just did, I don't remember the details.
I saw it in the paper, the substantial damage also.
Right.
So we've already, Marion County prohibits enclosures below the flood, base flood elevation. We've done that for a long time and that's to prevent basements, but the weird catch to that is if you build a crawl space in a But the weird catch to that is, if you build a crawl space in a slightly, slightly incorrect way, FEMA is going to rate that as a basement on insurance, and your insurance can go up 10, 12, 15 times what would be otherwise, literally thousands of dollars a year. So it's important to prohibit basements in the floodplain because they're just unaffordable to try to get flood insurance for those. So Salem's doing that, and their code, their code, Marion County's code has a lot of, a lot of items in it that Salem's doesn't. We've had them there for a long time. And our code is more consistent with what the model code has for the state of Oregon. And Salem has a lot of opportunities to, I think, and to improve their code. We're at two-foot base flood elevation, being elevated above. Salem's only at a foot, state minimum's a foot. A two-foot would be a real benefit. And there's other, there's a number of things you can do. One of the important things that CRS says is to, to do what's right for your jurisdiction based on what the elected officials believe and what, what the residents are willing to, to how they're willing to build and how they're willing to live. And CRS will assign points to your jurisdiction for how you feel like you want to handle floodplain development. It's always a risk when you go chasing after a point that you could go for that, and maybe the residents don't like that trade-off. It's not something that's, that's important. Or you can go for it, it could have a big impact on the jurisdiction, and you get 20 points, and then you've, you've really achieved, really achieved nothing. So I've, I kind of admired in Marion County that we've done for years what has been right for Marion County and, and what's consistent with whether federal regulations, state regulations, and out of that we get a pretty high rating of 20 percent discount. What we changed recently was we changed the way we look at substantial damage and substantial improvement. For, for a long time, Marion County, I think we were the only one in the state that had a lower ratio. When a house gets damaged after a flood event or even a fire, after any kind of an event, if the damage exceeds a certain value of the existing home, then when that home's repaired, when people put the money back in it to repair the home, the whole home has to be brought up to current floodplain standards. Back a few years ago and for years, Marion County had a 20 percent. So if the home's worth a certain amount and the damage exceeds 20 percent, then we put the money back to repair the home, the whole home has to be brought up to current standards. I think we were the only jurisdiction in Oregon that had a lower substantial damage threshold. We moved that up to the state and federal minimum of 50 percent, because what we found were that homes were either being damaged at, or improved at 5 percent, 10 percent, 1 percent, or they're being improved at 110, 120 percent. There are very few homes that were, where in between that would get caught, whether it was 20 or a 50 percent rating. So we went with the 50 to give citizens, residents, more flexibility in the repairs they can do to their home or to recover after a disaster without having to bring the whole home up to a new standard. The difference there, we, we did, we lost points. We lost, I think it was less than 20, 25 points, so it was very minimal.
Okay, great. So this, the last thing that was on my mind as Commissioner Brantano was talking about getting, and you, Brandon, also talking about getting information out, I would like us to do a press release on this, if we could get it out even this afternoon. I think Jolene, John, Jolene could. It'd be really simple, just that the Board of Commissioners just approved our community rating system, and, and our press releases don't necessarily make it in the Statesman Journal all the time, but they do almost always make it in Woodburn, Almsville, you know, these, the various newsletters in Silverton, Stateon, pretty much the way that we write them. And so I think that would be a really great way, just to kind of kick off your outreach campaign, is to get a little bit of information there. So we'll talk to Jolene when we go back upstairs, and if something you could help her write, that would be marvelous. Do you have time to work on that?
We sure do. I sure do, I mean, yes.
That'd be wonderful. All right, any further discussion on this? Thank you for your great work.
We need a motion.
Yeah, I think Sam's.
All right.
Commissioner Brantano's turn.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we do approve the FEMA Community Rating System annual recertification.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the rating system recertification. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item. Rod Culkins is here to, this is approving an order appointing Lauren Hall to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. So I think you were waiting for Sean and Lauren, right? Are they?
They've both deserted me. Actually, emergency services, sometimes emergencies do come up, and Lauren said that one came up this morning, and he apologizes that he's not able to be here this morning. So I'm here in my role as Ambulance Service Advisory Area Administrator today, and as you know, the, in Oregon, the regulation of ambulance services is the purview of the counties. And to that end, to make sure that we guide those services well, we have an Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. There are 11 ambulance service areas in Marion County and two dispatch centers. We look to the Ambulance Service Area Committee to have a broad range of representation from emergency medical services and, and their support services. And for a number of years, we have been talking at the committee about how wonderful it would be in case we could get somebody from one of the dispatch centers to be a member of the committee. And so that's why I'm bringing forward Lauren's name for appointment to the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee. He works at MEDCOM, which is the combination of what used to be two PSAPs, the dispatch centers, NORCOM and SANTIAM. And in that role, he serves as kind of the person that keeps track of all the CAD boxes. And then for those of you who don't know what a CAD box is, it's kind of by, property by property listing of who is going to make the fire response to that property and who is going to make the ambulance response to that property. And those sometimes are different. And it's very important, obviously, for clarity of who's going to respond, making sure we get a response there in a very short period of time, that those be accurately kept. So Lauren does that and does dispatching. He has been in the business for over 25 years. He's served as a volunteer firefighter and emergency medical technician for Silverton Fire. He's also worked with Woodburn Ambulance for a stint of about one and a half year. He really is somebody who understands how dispatch is affecting services to citizens on the ground. Anyhow, his application was reviewed by the Advisory Committee, and they are recommending him for appointment as well. I'd hope Sean would have been here this morning. I'm not quite sure where he is. He's chair of our Advisory Committee, but he conveyed to me that the committee had recommended Lauren's appointment, and I also asked that you approve his appointment for a term with the Advisory Committee through January 31st of 2018.
Well, thank you, and you're right, if you have someone on the ambulance committee, they're probably going to be involved in emergencies. I just wanted to say, when you introduced yourself and said that you were the administrator of the Ambulance Area Service Committee, is that right, Advisory Committee?
County ambulance administrator, yeah.
Right. But you have done such an outstanding job, and I think back to how, what's the word, contentious the, it was when, you know, 10 years ago or so, and how with your leadership and also with Sean, I mean, he deserves a great deal of credit, I think, and then getting a really good group of people together to work out all of those boundary issues and payment issues and other things that are really vexing to the, to the community that keep the services going the way that they should go, and also to make sure that the response times are as high as they possibly can be and that our rural areas are taken care of. It's, it's a very important job, and this committee just does a lot of work around that area so that when it comes to us, we're not trying to sort out the disagreements, but that collectively, they're saying this is the way that we can manage the system. So this is a really important position to fill, and again, appreciate Lauren Hall willing to step up and, and fill that. Any questions or comments from Rod?
Good. Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order appointing Lauren Hall to the Ambulance Service Advisory Committee for the term ending January 31st, 2018. Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this appointment. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Thanks for waiting till the end of the meeting, too. It all worked out, right? Okay, so that concludes our business today. We have no public hearings. Read the calendar of meetings that we have for Wednesday to Wednesday, September 2nd through September 9th, 2015. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present. We're just completing our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room at Courthouse Square. Today, Wednesday, September 2nd, at noon, is a lunch meeting with Woodburn officials and Marion County officials at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. That will be followed at 3 o'clock this afternoon with an Insight Board and Midwalamet Jobs Council meeting, the location of the Insight Boardroom, 626 High Street Northeast, Suite 305 in Salem. Tomorrow, September 3rd, Thursday at 9:30, is our monthly Department Head Elected Officials meeting that will be held in the Senator Hearing Room here at Courthouse Square. Usually it's held upstairs, but we're having active shooter training tomorrow, so we're going to have that down here. Should be exciting.
I don't know.
All right, and then there evidently are no meetings on Friday, and then Monday's a holiday, right, Labor Day? So Tuesday, September 8th, at 7:30 in the morning, is our monthly meeting with Stateon officials out at the Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North 3rd Avenue in Stateon. That will be followed at noon by a back-to-school lunch and awesome awards at the Salem Convention Center. Then at 4 o'clock on Tuesday, September 8th, is the monthly meeting of the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, and that will be in the Commissioners Boardroom on the 5th floor here at Courthouse Square. Then a week from today, September 9th, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for a regular Wednesday board session, and that will be followed at 3:30 p.m. with the monthly meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board in the Commissioners Boardroom, 5th floor at Courthouse Square, with the addition of Nate Brown, who we just approved today. So that's the calendar. So anything fun to talk about? Anything exciting to talk about? Nothing exciting or fun, huh?
Little rain, things are better. I thought maybe we were going to talk about that.
We didn't.
Well, that is exciting.
Yeah, we didn't get any new information.
No.
Before the meeting.
On drought declarations.
On the drought declaration. So we'll have to follow up with Ed and see where we're at. I did talk with John Zalinski from the Marion County Farm Bureau, and the, and Ed had talked, we talked after our meeting, Ed had talked with Mr. Dillon from the Farm Bureau, and they don't have any negative consequences throughout the state that they know of.
Okay, so there's no downside to declaring a declaration? Sam, just wondering why we just don't do it?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking, and so we do have somebody here from, from the Marion County Farm Bureau observing us today, so maybe afterwards we can.
Right, find out.
Get some information where they stand. But we, we certainly want to respect our agricultural community and what their needs are. So I, I don't know that we found any downside, other than the fact, when I talked with Mr. Zalinski, he said the concern from some of the members was giving up the rights to a state agency who may come in and, and change some water rights issues, but I, I think we're so far down the road now that, that maybe it's only, and if we declare it, we did clarify this, if we declare it, it only lasts till December 31st of this year.
So it doesn't go into the next growing season, right?
Right, right. So that would be a good thing. So if there are any negative consequences that we haven't discovered or, you know, they're hidden, they would certainly only be for the last three months of the year, probably by the time the governor declares the emergency.
It sounds like blueberries are the issue.
A new crop, yeah, trying to keep the new crop going. And using a domestic water supply, they have to have an emergency declaration to be able to get water resources to allow a domestic water supply.
Right. And just for everybody's.
Yeah, frame it up for us, so we didn't really.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, so we've been having a discussion all the way along about whether to declare or not. We hadn't had any requests from cities, and it's an interesting dynamic, because you have to determine what the farmers want, you also have to determine what the, the city situations, because each, we have 20 cities in Marion County, and each has a little bit of a different spin on their water rights and where they get their water. So Ed Flick is our Emergency Management Coordinator, Director, Manager, whatever his title is, and has been communicating closely with us and has given us briefings, and his advice has been, there's been no reason to declare a drought declaration or to declare a drought, and the problem is this rearrangement of water rights or actually the ability of the state to manipulate water rights in a way that perhaps could affect farmers. But then we did finally get a request.
We didn't want winners and losers.
Right, exactly, right. We, we did get a request, and then the question is, all right, so this would benefit this group of farmers in a particular area of Marion County, but are there, anytime you do something to help one or two people or a small group of people, as you know, at state level can kind of push the balloon out another direction, and then all of a sudden you create problems for someone else. So that was what we asked Ed and Kevin also to go out, Commissioner Cameron, to go out and, and contact the state and the, our County Farm Bureau to make sure that if we move forward with this, we're not going to create a situation where we're helping certain farmers, but other farmers are going to be unhappy with us. So it sounds like the preliminary information is that not, not a negative, not a downside, as you mentioned.
Yeah, and the other thing was, we were looking for somebody that asked, and, and I couldn't find anybody till just this week, again, on the blueberries. We're, and we want to facilitate, make it work for everybody, so whatever seems to be the best, I'm sure I'll be supportive of, and you, I think you will, too.
Right, yeah, absolutely. So if we need to do that sooner rather than later, we'll find a time to, I mean, it can be on next Wednesday's board session if it needs to happen sooner than that. I don't know what the deadlines are, or whether there are deadlines for putting it in, yeah, but let's go ahead with that.
Just since we're on the subject, just watching the weather this morning, they talked about, you know, showery period now, but then more extensive dryness, so the issue hasn't gone away by any means.
Right. Well, it was supposed to be rainy for four days, and I think this is the fourth day, and it really hasn't been all that rainy. We've had.
Spots.
Yes, yeah, and it's opened up at night a little bit, but, and state fair is on right now, so.
Oh, so it has to rain.
I was there, I was there last night.
That's what everybody says, right? Is that it's going to, the reason it's raining is because state fair's on, but I drove out to Public Works for a meeting yesterday afternoon and got caught in the state fair traffic. It looks like they have some pretty good attendance.
Yeah, you know, I'm on the state fair council, so I, I called the, the director, executive director, and actually sat up in his office yesterday afternoon when I left here, the office about 5 o'clock, and he said they're having tremendous turnout.
Wonderful, yeah.
The only weather that affected him was the, the wind Saturday, and it came earlier than expected, and they were prepared for it, and it's just been a, a really good, solid turnout, so heat hurts, but Oregonians are not afraid of a little bit of a shower. And I went last night, I stayed till about, a little bit after 8 o'clock, I stayed through the first, I guess it was not quite 8 o'clock, the first 45 minutes of Vince Gill's concert, and the place was packed. It was really packed. And Thursday, for those people that are watching, 25 cent admission on Thursday. Don't go Thursday, Sam, if you don't like crowds. It's going to be crowded. So, and then we're going back tonight as the family for the Casting Crowns concert. So they're having a good, and the pavement, it's really cool. Looks good because of Marion County Public Works and the work that they did, so the fair's on, it's going good, and I think, even though we're not getting a lot of rain, if you look at the fires that are happening, this, this, just this humidity and the change in temperatures is helping damper. I saw on the paper today, which shocked me, BLM is lifting the fire ban. I, I thought, well, that doesn't make sense to, in September, to do that.
Certain campgrounds, it said, it was fairly.
Yeah, in a, in a, but, you know, how do people read that message? And they think everything's okay, so. I know we haven't lifted ours in the county, and we still have a park closed until we can get in there to, to harvest that timber, that little Norfolk Park, so.
Now, the cooler weather is always good for fair, and, you know, people don't think about it, they think about the people, but the animals, they're the ones that suffer when it's really hot.
Right.
And so this weather's just perfect for fair, really, as long as it doesn't get too much downpour. I mean, Oregonians don't mind a little rain, but if it's, if it's, if the skies open up sometimes, it keeps them away.
And we had pretty good weather for our county fair this year, and I was talking to Mike last night, sitting in his office, and he said Benton County got crushed because they were in the real hot weekend, and so did Washington County.
Mm-hmm.
And Lynn County, they just, it was too hot.
Yeah. We lucked out.
Yeah, we did, so. So go to the fair. If you haven't gone there, it's pretty neat to have some really new and different things. There's the old stuff, the stuff that's always there, but there's some new and different attractions, so. And I think we're going to go Monday, too, for that other, I'm just a fair, I'm a fair guy this year.
So you liked Vince Gill, was he good?
Yeah, you know, he was real popular back in the early 80s, and had a lot of his CDs, and he made some comments that you would have liked, I'll tell you.
Why, let's hear him first.
After we shut down the microphone. No, he was talking about some of the saddest country western songs there are, and I think one of them was by, was it by Buck Owens, and it was about a dog? I'm trying to think what the name of it was. Anyways.
I used to listen to, that doesn't ring any.
The young boy gets rescued by the dog, you know, from drowning, and in the end, the dog's, it's kind of an Old Yeller story. And he has to, he has to shoot his dog at the end.
Oh, dear. And Vince. And why do you think I might like that story?
No, 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 he says it's the saddest country western song, and at the end, he goes, and he goes, "I don't think they play at Peter Rowley's."
Probably not.
So it was, it was good. He put on a good show. He's not, I mean, he's, he's not a rocker or anything, he's just a ballad guy, writes a lot of love songs, and it's pretty cool.
I've got one other one, and it's not a funny one, but it's that just watching the bird flu that I've been worried about forever isn't going away. In fact, they're talking about what happens with ducks, migratory birds going up and down. And you know the damage that it's done to the poultry business in the Midwest and stuff, so. But what scared me is always, is it talks about the possibility of human transmission and some mutations, so I just wanted to say it, just so we'll keep it on our radar.
Okay. Anything else? Well, good meeting, and thank everybody for their good work. We had some, not a lot of items today, but some important items, so. With that, we will adjourn.